We're recording and it is officially 7:06.
As we order at 7:06, we're going to read the rules of conduct. This meeting will be held both in person and virtual. This session is being both video and audio recorded. Board members and staff who are joining virtually will generally remain unmuted except for speaking or voting. And we'll generally be keeping video of ourselves on throughout the meeting. If a member of the public virtually creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting on recommendation of staff. Or their first selectmen. For public input before the meeting, please email your comments to publicinput@columbia. CT or within 24 hours before the meeting. If attending virtually, public comments during the meeting can be submitted through the chat feature. In or wager in and request you might be unmuted.
You know, there's very well decided.
Let's have a moment of silence. Prove the agenda. I made a motion that we approve the agenda. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Move to approve the minute, the course of living. Regular meeting minutes for May 4, 2021. Any discussion about that? All in favor?
On whole business, and I'm going to turn it over to you more.
And before we jump to the audience decisions, Anne, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
That looks good. We can even see you perfectly now with your new camera.
Yeah, that's correct. That's cool.
Okay, whole business. Draft report by the Charter Revision Commission. So in your binders, you'll see a highlight of the changes made to the different sections. Put together by Rick Nassif, the chairman, and with assistance from legal counsel. And that'll help you when you go through the red line. See why some of these changes were made. It's kind of the explanation behind it. And then the last paragraph is one that the Charter Revision Commission decided not to make a recommendation. That they forwarded to board section for their thoughts on whether a change should be allowed or made to the term selectman. First level. So that was where it could become the first select person. Or the other option was to leave it, have the charter leave it up to the elected first selectmen to be either called a select man or a select woman. So we that can be discussed by the board. And if you whatever you decide as a option would go back to Charter Revision and then they would bring it back to you again.
Now, I was looking this up online. And I guess for 400 years, it's been select men. Because it's usually been men who around the, or select, I guess that term goes back a real long ways. And, you know, I guess I know when I was younger, every time it was, if you didn't know if it was a male or female, say you're writing to, you always put sir. I would like to see it because now there are women that are in these positions. I don't know if I like select person. I don't know. Select one. And then one of the options, I guess, was to leave it up to the person.
I like leaving it up to the person.
Carmen wanted to keep it selected when she was under.
Well, I think it's funny because I remember her saying she didn't like it either. Because, but I don't know. I mean,
The thing is, you know.
I've read, when I read 400 years, it's been selectmen for 400 years.
And selectmen, the term man, I was taught when I was taking Spanish. Is actually a gender, it can be a gender neutral term.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I was taught that back thirty years ago, forty, forty-five years ago.
But it was always what they did. They, they, they referred to that if they didn't know. It was always male.
Well, but because man, man, human can be a gender neutral term. It isn't necessarily a man. It can be a man, but it can be a gender neutral when it's not a homie. So I don't think it was ever meant to be just a man. I think, man.
I don't know. It's just weird. I would like to see it, hang it up to the times, but.
I, I, I looked up the whole thing. There's not many around the country that have changed it to person.
Some of them have changed it based, you know, based on the individual, if they want to change it. And it seems like a making a big deal when it's not a big deal too. I don't know. If you're going to be the one that's the.
Well, one of the problems is also that then ordinances and everything, all that verbiage has to change.
You have to change the verbiage.
Yeah, so.
I like the idea and concept of changing. I don't know much of it.
In my opinion, it's much to do about that.
Much to do about that because it was, I was, yeah, the history of it's amazing. It's been selectmen since, you know, forever. They said 400 years. That's a long time.
You'd have to change that plaque up here as well.
I was just saying that when I had another one.
Select dude.
I like select dude. A select person seemed weird. Select woman.
Selects. No.
Well, mayor.
You're over there.
Then we turn it to mayor. Mayor can be either. That's really general.
General.
Right. Resident, sorry.
Oh, that's weird.
You had almost escaped.
You're here.
Ooh, we're sharing bagels.
I know, this is.
Well, we're ordering more chairs. These were our child chairs.
I have a chair.
We could get you one. Well, that's good.
But anyway, I don't know.
I don't know now. I feel like we're catering to all sorts of nuts.
We did.
I grew up with three brothers working in male dominated. I don't care. Do you not get the chance?
No.
Change the charge of select person.
It's nuts.
Yeah. Or select.
It doesn't matter what you do about nothing. It's really narrow. It's just the idea that they don't.
Real business.
If you want to call yourself a select woman, just for clarification, if somebody's addressing the server now.
Yeah, that doesn't happen anyways, but.
Everybody just starts it with hi or hello or.
I know. But it does go back for many years.
Yeah.
For that, so what do you think? You're done. I just, I remember when I was in school and we didn't know if it was male or females, they were sending letters to, it was always near sir. So they would refer back to that.
I was doing, do you serve now?
You did that. They always told me, you do sir.
Oh, see, I did. No, sir, madam.
I guess I did what I was told sometimes.
Or dear, or dear manager, or dear, you know.
But that's where it was really the, seemed like a big deal. So why don't we do that?
Or to whom it may concern.
I don't know. I'm, in reality, it doesn't matter. But I was looking for the history of it.
The other change that was pointed out to me that we need to make is when we reference on the finance part, the position of fiscal manager. Bev informed me that a long time ago, we changed the fiscal manager to finance director. So anywhere in the charter referring to fiscal manager, we'll just change it to finance director.
And the, that minority representation, I guess if somebody resigns from a board and that that party doesn't appoint somebody else within 90 days, then the other party has the right to appoint somebody. I think that's right. I'm saying that right.
And it also.
I think the board of selectmen has the right to appoint somebody who's not.
The other party has a right to put somebody up.
The other party would have a right to put somebody up, but still.
They have 90 days.
They have 90 days and they should do something within 90 days.
Yeah, I agree.
And if they don't, then that makes sense. That makes a lot of sense.
And the selectmen still would have to prove.
And the selectmen still has to approve it anyways, but it can be appointed, somebody can make a recommendation from the other party. Well, that's what's happening anyways because you can't find people from the party room that want to do these things.
I didn't think it made a lot of changes, but I thought a few that it made were reasonable.
And now Lisa and Judy have a heads up on the, Rob, because you guys.
We were there.
Were part of that.
A lot of it was just technical stuff to change, update some of the legal jargon. That was most of it, really.
Oh, and they're going to make the elections. You know how the, that law year elections for planning and zoning and then.
There were two.
Board of Justice and Appeals.
Yes, there, it's going to, and there's a schedule to do it, but by 2025, I think it's going to be.
In two elections, every, you know, those terms.
Which I think is smart because.
Job and the start of your late.
They're going to start on, start on the same one. No, even year beginnings, right, ready.
Right.
But it was really nothing. I mean, those were the actual changes. The other stuff was really verbiage.
And so we did the state troopers so that if something changed at the state trooper level, we could adjust. Because right now it says that we can do one.
It says you shall have at least one state trooper. And I said, well, the way things are going, the state troopers are getting pulled to the highways. We might not have a resident trooper. And they might open it up that we can join a peeper or something.
You're short-staffed?
They're real short-staffed.
Yeah, who wants to be a cop?
They're, they're not graduating out of the academy and the retired in Lexington now.
I don't blame them. Man, they're.
The change in the benefit plan too, I guess.
Yes, that'll force a lot of.
At a certain time to keep your medical insurance.
It'll go to the lower quality. They'll make a change, right?
Oh, I mean, yeah, I'm not surprised. I wasn't aware of that, but that doesn't surprise me.
Well, here's Beverly. I just noticed you. For anything, now, how do you want to do this? Do you want to go over all the changes or would you like to digest it all and decide what we want to do at the next board selection meeting and then skip?
I think that's good. Why don't we take one for now and then just give it the board a chance to digest the changes and then we can.
And what you could do, because there's a time constraint. At the next board selection meeting, you could set the legal notice for the following board selection. If you want to do that.
It has to be a legal.
I guess my, my concern is, do we actually have to necessarily approve it or have to set a legal notice with the media set up right now and then subject to our approval?
We could set it like, I was looking, we've got a board selection meeting on the first and the 15th. You could set the legal notice for the public hearing for the 15th tonight. And, and you're done. And then you have next meeting to get everything to where you want it.
That would make sense, Mark.
And what I'm thinking is we do want in Yeoman's Hall, like we did at town meeting, in public, in person. And then move back here for the this type of meeting.
I can't imagine that you're going to get a a corraling of citizens.
Correct. I can't imagine.
We're not making any good changes.
Yeah, I'm going to be away on the first. I won't be.
So this is to be, but you'll be here? But is there anything you want to advise the board on tonight?
The charter? Like I said, it was really.
You're in agreement with all the changes?
I'm in agreement with all the changes.
Okay.
I am too.
Yeah, I thought everybody worked pretty hard on that.
So really, all the board will do is give one more look through. Bev, I mentioned the thing you highlighted, the fiscal manager needs to be changed to finance director, wherever it shows up in the charter. Okay, I agree with that. So really, we'll make it for June 15th. That, you want to do 6:45?
Yeah.
The order.
I doubt as many people attend.
And, and this will be Yeoman's Hall, June 15th. 6:45. So why don't I send this around for signatures and what's to get? And I guess you'd have to make a motion. Do you want to read that, Rob?
Okay, we're making a motion. The board of selectmen will conduct the public hearing in Yeoman's Hall, 323 Route 87, Columbia, Connecticut, on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, at 6:45 PM to hear comments on the proposed draft revision to the charter, which are available for review in the town of Columbia's website and Town Clerk's office. So can we take a vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then I'll go ahead and sign it. And so, so 6:1 is done. New business, so tell me for additional calls for the town hall walkway.
So what happened was, in the middle of this walkway project, what became evident was where the walkways joined at Dipper Tees.
Yeah.
We had to really widen it because none of them were at a right angle. So by widening the walkways, it flares in, you don't notice the severness of the walkways aren't. Because they're on angle because of where the war memorial is. You know, that can't move. And where our front door is and where the chapel is. And the lineup with the walkway with the church. So that, that caused us to need more bricks.
Was the additional $6,000?
Well, most of, that's only 1,800 the extra size of the walkways. The real cost was the time to put in a light system for the whole green was now. So the lighting is to light every war memorial each side and to light all three flags and to light the copper beach and the chapel. So it'll all be low LED lighting that we can regulate. And to do that right now is the only time we can do it.
Yeah, you have to, what are you putting it under the wall?
Yeah. Yeah, so we had to run all the conduit under the block and buy the system right now and wired into the chapel. So that's happened. But Stephen approved both of these since it was urgent, but now we, because it's a capital project, increase and change order, we have to go to a town meeting.
Is it in the budget? I mean, do we have?
We're going to take it out of contingency.
Intingency, you have money.
And that'll bring contingency down to 17,000.
Well, we only have one.
June 15th could be a good time to let you.
Yeah, we could do the public.
What, when did I, I think I was going to do that one.
Yeah, because you got to pay.
June 1st.
Yeah.
At 6:45.
Okay.
Same thing. We'll run over there, a town meeting, run that. Yeah, now wait a minute. Jen, did we make a did we make, I think it's in your folder of things assigned. Look in there. Yeah. There it is. We, we did create it. So why don't you lead, lead that motion?
Okay. My move to set a legal notice for for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, Yeoman's Hall at 6:45 PM for clause one, to address and approve a funds transfer in the amount of $6,650 from the town of Columbia contingency account 10-4800-900 to capital improvements building 20-6206002 to cover the cost of built budget for new lighting and additional payers for the walkway and patio at the war memorial at the town hall.
Hold on. Good enough. Let me just unmute everybody. I somehow locked everybody in mute.
It's working now.
Okay, did, was there, there's a motion on the floor. Was there any comments? Bev, did you need to say anything?
That's muted.
Nope, I'm good.
Good.
Unless anybody has questions, but you pretty much got it in the motion.
The sidewalk, the sidewalk coming Yeoman's down for more memorials are a part of the project.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it looks really nice, gotta say. You know, let's see, what's our biggest thing in this town? Fourth of July. I think it's kind of.
Yeah.
And I guess we're having a Fourth of July parade this year.
Yes, we are.
We are.
And what triggered all this was two years ago Memorial Day. A lot of our veterans were ugly with walkers, eating prey. Getting everybody from Yeoman's to the memorial for the service was a trip hazard.
Yeah.
A lot of them stayed up at Yeoman's and could not participate or listen to it. So that's what led to this.
It's a great, I think it's good. It's nice.
Right, alright, so any other comments?
Yeah.
All in favor? I mean, yes, for, so we're signing.
Yes.
That practice is suspenseless?
Yes, we do this every year.
I move to approve the recommendation to transfer untracked property taxes to the suspense court book.
And actually.
That's people who are, which is not going to get the money, basically.
Probably. They moved out of state.
Or they died.
But if they try to come back and buy a car, it'll trigger. So they'll still pay because they can't register a car without being current. So they still exist as owing us.
So this is pretty much.
This is pretty much people that have moved out of state.
I know there were some that were deceased too.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
So we're trying to figure out what to do to our gate. Joan, who's been closing our gate and opening it every night and every morning and blocking the bathrooms, is resigned.
Oh, so you need somebody else.
We're, and we don't have to solve this all tonight, but I just wanted your opinions. One thought is to actually move the gate to the new road, right? You know when you come in and there's a new parking lot?
Yeah.
And a new road right to the right?
Yeah.
We're thinking put the gate there. So you're blocking. In the winter, you could leave that lot all the time. So you can't go back, but you can still use the parking lot if you want to park and cross the ski or a lot of winter these days is not that bad of winter. You could still probably walk. Park. We just went open and shut the gate between November and April. That's what Mark.
And what people are doing is they park below and then walk to a place gate too. I've seen that.
Right.
So they may not drive back there. So you don't have to plow it.
Right.
But they are using it.
We're willing to plow the little lot, but we don't want to.
Well, maybe you don't want to plow the other lot that you sometimes plow the little.
Right, we could just do the one.
Satellite.
Yes, we could forget the satellite.
Yeah.
So that's one thought is to do that. The other thought is to oh, lock the gate. Open it in the morning. At 6:30, it could be open. That's when Beth comes in. Beth Lance, one of the first ones here.
Okay.
She could open in the morning. And Mark Volzner could lock it at night, but he goes home more like 4:35. So.
That's a little early.
That is early. That's the problem. So the issue is, do you leave it open in the zone? I don't know what to do because this is a tough.
Has it got a problem to leave it open?
We haven't had a problem yet. We're, we're concerned that
Teenagers.
Could we have a problem that became a loitering place in the back?
Well, I did one time I recently was out there. There's a lot of kids using the basketball court, which is great, but that means they're there. If there's no button, the gate being closed, they're going to stay there. It'll get dark and then.
Yeah, that kids can do similar things.
Can always put in the camera with that.
Now, what you could do is you could lock this new data problem now.
Yeah.
Always leave that parking lot open. So all you're doing is making a sweep and asking anybody in the back, would you move to the front parking lot?
The parking lot would be always open.
Right.
Alright, and so, and as close to the, to the street case, there's an issue as hard as the police, they could see, you know, I'm routine.
We have the option to close it totally often. We never wanted to shut the street gate. But we'll put a new gate at the new.
That would appeal to me more. You see it over in the SPOHolo State Park. On Bassett Bridge Road there, they have a parking lot there. And then they have the gate just beyond that where it locks it off to the main park. You can still park there.
People want to go fishing and for, you know, someone like that.
Right.
But you're saying to leave it open totally?
No, just the main parking lot, but we'll shut and close.
Just still close. We put a new date there.
Yeah.
Right. And then I think what I do is we lock the bathrooms with whoever locks the gate and then you have to use port parking.
Right.
And on weekends, we'll give bathroom keys to the soccer coaches, the little league coaches, and they have to open and shut the bathroom.
So who, so we'd have to hire somebody to lock it?
We could.
I mean, they use sports.
We, we can do it with employees if we have this, where we lock that on gate early.
Yeah, but what about soccer games and?
Well, then you'd have to. It's ideal to find someone we could hire, but.
This is, ideally would be somebody who lives on Henneken Road.
Yes, so we'll advertise. I just wanted to kind of.
I would like to hire somebody to go in and close it at sunset. Lock it and do second.
Or at some point, yeah, because people at 4:30.
In the winter, it, it.
Winter, just leave that gate locked.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So really, you're hiring someone between April and November to.
Right, yeah, probably eight o'clock would be.
I would just go sunset.
But the outside.
Kids are always there.
The outside parking lot that you proposed would be year round.
Yes, we'd always leave that open.
Okay, the, the second, the whole would be something that would be seasonally.
Right.
Seasonally, we lock the bathroom.
Right, I think that's a good idea.
I would do it sunset in Columbia, yeah.
What's sunset change?
Sunset changes. I mean, in April, it's what, six, well, when clocks change, so probably 6:30 and then it can go as late as quarter or night.
Hey, Bev, you have a lot of experience using the park. Don't you walk your dog over there?
Yes.
You have thoughts on this?
I think you should hire somebody who's willing to, to probably keep it, keep it open till about 7:30, 8 o'clock. There are people at the park. Some of us just park on Henneken Road because because on occasion, you know, if you're not careful, you could get locked in. Because they're not always, it's not always a consistent time when she's can't come to lock the gate. So, but I would definitely get it, you had to put a sign up to your posting, but I'm sure somebody on Henneken or in town who doesn't mind going out at sunset would probably do it.
I think in 7:30 or 8:00 too, because I, I'm up there until five and there's still a lot of people up there. You know.
Well, I'm thinking if you come home at six o'clock or, or even, you know, there's some of your people in, in July, it's still light.
What you're right, when it gets dark, people probably don't want to be on the place gate, but it is so busy up there.
There's, there's somebody who uses the pavilion for a meeting because they've been up there last couple of weeks on Sunday night or something and they're there till at least closing. So, and there are people up there who stay till dark, probably just to keep the kids busy, but.
Get their dogs going for.
Unless there are most people associate stuff like that with sunset.
Yeah, just sunset.
You know, it's, you come out, you set a nice sunset, you know.
When it gets dark, it's probably. When it gets dark, it's probably.
We can post that the park closed at sunset.
Yeah, gate closes at sunset.
Right.
When you say park closes, you know, you could say park opens sunrise to sunset, and then gate closes, you had it open at six thirty, it closes at sunset.
Yep.
Okay, we'll keep work.
Yeah, you'll need somebody for the weekend, because, um, so it's better to hire somebody.
Alright, uh, I just wanted to say that we've had a lot of volunteers helping with the town, for that, just had a volunteer lunch at the senior center. Uh, Stephen went and represented y'all, and, uh, to thank all the volunteers that helped the food drive, everything that happened during COVID. And then I noticed, uh, Justin Holbrook and, um, Joan Hill, and Kathy Tolstark, Miller Ramsey, Ingrid Wood, have all been doing a lot. Of rose pruning and Indian Morrison, the new garden in the back.
Ockham Garden, yeah.
Ockham Garden.
Very involved with that stuff.
Yeah, and I know, um, Mike Lester, Rich Regan have been helping me with traffic, with trying to work with the DOT with Beth Lunt, and that's, that's coming along really good.
Yeah, at some point when we can do this, we wanna have a, like a memorial to, you know, to honor the, um, Ockham with the, the placards.
Right.
So that, we're thinking, well, maybe the fall, and then we're thinking maybe the spring, so I'm not sure, we have to. And not this time, when, when it's.
Is there any kind of an anniversary of the day?
Well, we should have done it a year ago, but we couldn't because of, that was the anniversary.
But I mean, a day, is it spring or fall, or is?
Oh, um, I don't think that matters, but we were supposed to do it a year ago, right after the, by the start of the, that, it just didn't happen because of. We wanted to get the garbage in, and then COVID happened, and it was just another thing, but, but we'll do it.
Well, it comes in the right time.
Oh, seven four, I think over that, the townwide, we, uh, Melissa Regan came to me and asked if on June twenty-sixth, she could organize a townwide bag sale to raise money for the food bank. So on the surface, that seemed great, um, and she wanted, had the donations come to her, and she would then advertise whatever someone was having a tag sale.
Right.
And then have the money made out to the town food bank, so, seems like a win-win. I ran it by Karma, and they said they, they would not insure a townwide bag tag sale, because you cannot control the liability risk on every person's property. They said if you have a tag sale on town property, and it's through a town organization, Karma will insure it.
So how did the other towns do it?
That, well, one of the main ones, I, I just noticed, did one, but they're not a Karma town, so.
Because I know Coventry, I think Coventry did one.
You just do it unofficially.
Chaplain did one.
Well, the only way I would recommend, if, if Melissa wanted to organize this, we just can't have it on town property. She'd have to do it on everyone's property, call it a townwide tag sale, but the town is not sponsoring.
Yeah.
So, there's really two ways, we do it as just on town property, like the PTO used to, or in the school parking lot.
Yeah.
Or at this parking lot, wherever you wanna do it, it becomes a town tag sale, but it can't be townwide.
Or she could, if she did it on just people's own property?
If, if people's own property, if they're doing her philosophy, I don't want anything to do with it.
Well, it just can't be town sponsored, that's all.
It's right, it's not town sponsored.
Yeah, sure, she can do that, let's go, hey, let's everybody have tag sales on this day and call it a town taxi.
Right, she's organized.
It's something that has to do with money too, because she's getting money to do it, that's gonna be given to the town, so.
That's where it gets a little bit, it, it implies town sponsor.
It implies.
It's called.
Everybody should make a donation, and then you just, it's kinda like when you have an event and suggested donation. So we're gonna have a tag sale this day, a suggested donation.
It's always a questionable thing.
Okay, so we're all, it's, it's one or the other, I just can't keep up.
Okay, I mean, you, you've got it, I mean, we've got to have insurance for whatever we're doing.
But I think I find that.
Alright, and now you're into our heat, LMS, alright.
Application for installing a boat lift on twenty-one Upper Tement Terrace. I move to approve the application to install a boat lift on the property at twenty-one Upper Tement Terrace for Andrew and Jennifer.
Nucy?
Minicucci. Minicucci, thank you. Let's move, that's a picture of what the venue is called. And soon it's. You don't like the, this, no.
The application comes into the landings department, and it's sent to LMS for their review. And then, description on the water. What's that?
That's what we're doing, because it's got, it's on the water.
It's gonna sit on the water.
So we need to make a motion to. Yeah.
Um, hold on, I approved the application, no, we're.
How old is it?
It's already gone, they all have, and now it's coming to us.
So we just need to.
Approve it subject to any conditions set forth by law.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's fill a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Black children, registration. Christopher Reetland from the Board of Education. I move to accept the resignation of Christopher Reetland from Board of Education. Watched up on those papers.
I know, it's in that list.
He's so good.
Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris.
Appointment of Robert Alar to Late Management Advisory Committee, I move to approve the appointment of Robert Alar to Late Management Advisory Committee. Any comments?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Appointment of Michael Armstrong to Late Management Advisory Committee. I move, I move to approve the appointment of Michael Armstrong to Late Management Advisory Committee. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Appointment of Jeremy Zarell to the Executive Farm Management Committee, I move the appointment of Jeremy Zarell to Executive Farm Management Committee, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointment of the Marine Patrol Officer, I move to approve the appointment of the following Marine Patrol Officers. Mark Volzner, Anika Peegen, is that Anika's?
Anika.
Michael Prince, Francie, Sharon Smith, Egan, Marby Smith, Maisy, Marby Smith, Jalen Beegan, Alexander Comstock, Dave Evans, James Dreamer, and William Wright. Comments or feelings about it there? They're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administration board.
Uh, Memorial Day veterans, we're doing this year, still subdued, coming, coming out of COVID right now. It'll be on Monday, tomorrow's day, we're having the pastor, the new pastor of the Conisha Church speak, and give a prayer, we'll have the voice cast doing reads, we have viewers coming in to do tasks.
Okay.
Um, the whole memorial should be done.
Okay. Somebody already.
Hold on, iPhone.
So you don't know who this is.
And Jen, what time is it starting, do we have a time yet?
Nine AM.
Nine AM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Nine o'clock, and we're not going to do. And don't, we're not going cemetery to cemetery, correct Jen?
Correct.
So it'll be still a down size.
Yes.
Just be here at the.
Yes, yes, if, if anybody would like to retire the cemetery, they will. Any other questions on the memorial? I already talked about the volunteers, and just a reminder, May twenty-sixth will be the budget public hearing at Port School. At seven, and June eighth will be the annual town budget meeting at seven at Port School. Followed by five afternoon. And in your packets, you'll find the, uh, the latest budget somewhere either front or back. Not in your actual binders, it's stapled inside.
So this is what will be given out?
Yes.
I know, it's just done.
Yep, right, that's what will be at the clerk's office, available at my office to hand out, and on the website.
No, it's sitting on the table.
It's somewhere.
Maybe he did that one.
I'll get you one, Mark, please, I know where. Okay. Um, and that's it, you, there's some correspondence?
Okay, I got a budget and.
Now, transfers.
Okay, move that we transfer three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, let's see, I'll choose. From. Ten four two five oh, three hundred general supplies to professional tech, a hundred and ten dollars. One zero four one three, I remember IT professional tech to machine equipment, three hundred dollars. Ten four five two zero, three hundred general supplies, other valves of transportation. Ten four six two, six two zero eight one one, machine equipment, hundred dollars to general supplies. And ten four two seven zero one two two zero, that was the service telephone, hundred and fifty dollars to late management. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's the transfers.
They have canceled the elderly services telephone, their call, because people wanted to use their own, is that correct, my memory was wrong? Cause one, they, they canceled the senior, the men car, says cell phone for men car, they changed it to game line, they turned it down to fifty.
Oh, right, I do remember that.
They, they canceled, right, because people wanted to use their own phone.
They felt they didn't need it, trying to pay for that service in the.
Beth. The six, six hundred and fifty contingency to town land acquisition.
Oh, that should be, um, sorry, that should be the, that's the town meeting one, that's just the typo on there, but the legal notice is correct. That's the one going to capital improvement buildings.
Right, so it's not town land, is it?
No, it's a typo, sorry about that.
Town, she said capital.
Capital improvement building, that's for the walkway.
Right.
So your legal notice and the motion up before is correct, this is just, this was just for information, so.
I was wondering about that.
Do we need to move it, or because we set a town meeting, that'll take care of it?
You set the town meeting, that'll take care of it, it's in the legal notice, it's correct there too, so you're all set.
Okay, so you don't have to worry about that.
Not voting on this part anyway, so it's just information.
That's for FYI, okay.
So it's mentioned for information, oh, it says it right there.
It does. Very good.
Alright, new funds.
New funds?
Move four hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents, three funds, pass those state and over. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, who knows?
The one that's, um, was six, what was it?
It's a big one. What's the big here? Well, the rescue truck is a big part of this.
Six hundred pounds?
Yeah.
Six hundred. Six hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Other than that, it didn't look bad.
I know we've paid those, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Well, this is seven hundred and six, why is it different?
Eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five nine one, eight.
Number twenty-one emergency, regular payments, seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Family financial principal interest, hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Six twenty-five.
That's our last one.
Credit card, two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents, paycheck, eight hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents, so that's. About a hundred and two. Eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-six, okay, any comments or questions or questions?
Um, do you have a question, there's a five thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars to probate the town of Manchester, curious what that is?
Probably just the cost.
It's that, uh.
That's the annual probate court fee.
Okay.
And then, they were late in sending the bill this year, usually we're supposed to get it in July and August, so, I guess they got behind.
Yes, uh, um, the international truck, or we haven't tried, isn't, haven't we had a lot of repairs on that for teen international? That location, where's the?
I, I haven't been brought up to speed on anything.
I just, it just seems to me we have that, and then it says landfill sampling, a hundred eighty-nine, I was curious, when do we, is that okay, everything here, okay?
Yeah, I have been noted, I have been notified there's any costs.
Alright.
Trucks always made for kids.
Any other question?
Oh, and feasibility for, study for border track, I thought border ed was doing that one.
It's in capital. Oh, money was, was set aside in cap, the board of ed capital plan.
Okay.
So, so, just so you know, they, there's gonna be no more costs, they, they're not expanding the track. Um, they're going to look to upgrade and revamp the track and the area around it, so they're gonna use the money left over from this feasibility study, plus whatever's been put in, gets approved in capital for next year. Hopefully they'll get that project done this summer.
Any other comments? Hey, all in favor of paying the, paying bills?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. One second, four to. Okay. I am a citizen. I'm very young, I didn't like to talk.
I don't see anything in chat. Except no message from Jen and everybody in the.
Okay, hearing nothing, uh, board member comments? I guess I.
No, I, I have nothing.
Yeah. Well, at least, jeez.
Okay.
Can I turn to speak?
Yes.
Sure. I think so. We have a town election coming up, and, um, I know both parties are having difficulty trying to keep candidates, I was wondering if the town should, uh, you're also way, putting out an effort to, a nonpartisan effort to, um, attract candidates.
Alright, thank you, yes, stay in touch, okay, bye.
Mute Dan again.
Yeah, please mute Ann, thank you.
That's a good idea.
You know, Theo used to sponsor, like debates or meet candidates at the school.
I'm not talking about a meeting candidate.
I, I understand, just, but I mean, that's, people just don't know.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, is that I think there would be nice, if we could make some kind of effort on part of the town for the publications that we have, or the media to.
We could put, yeah, we could put an advertisement in the article and.
Well, what you could do too, in like the town newsletter.
Yeah.
We could, we could describe what the positions do.
Right.
That's not a bad idea.
Don't know, and then state what's needed.
Yeah, but you can also save your interest in contact. Yeah, but you can also say if you're interested, contact the, the party chairman, and if you're. If, if you're an affiliate, and you could, you could contact somebody at the town, town park, something like that, and we express the interest, but I think that'd be a way to. At least get the word out, I think it's gotta be an effort, maybe, it's, I think it's.
It's always a challenge. You know, you have people.
You know, and you could, the caucuses are coming up.
Yeah.
And then there's all the committees to fill in November, so I mean, you can always just.
Where are the caucuses?
I think they're in June, right?
July.
July.
So you really have to get something out of this, you have a week and a half to help Jen and I. With something for the June newsletter.
Okay.
Maybe everybody put in their thoughts, and maybe you can compile them all.
Yeah.
Cause it is a challenge, definitely.
No doubt.
I'm sure everybody got it. I mean, people are sure, it's always a quite a problem, you know.
Yeah, you just need people to, you need to be cycling people in and outbreak.
We'll also have to hit the.
Never said anyone.
I know what it wants out. I'm tired.
You need to look for those forty-year-olds.
You need those forty-year-olds.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Your kids are old enough that they can get out.
Yep.
Yeah.
And your forty-year-olds that have the energy.
Right. The next generation.
I want to hang out with my grandkids, I don't want to do this guy. I'd rather hang out with my grandchildren than.
All right. Do you have an executive session?
I have an executive session. All right, so I will end the meeting, go into executive session at seven fifty-seven, um, would you like to invite me into it?
Yeah.
I'd like to invite you.
Thank you.
I know.
What, what it wants?
Tell us everything. Okay, thank you, Mertely, thank you, Jen.
Goodnight.
Bye-bye.
What was it, yeah, sign us before we close the meeting, or?
Yeah, you could, so it's eight twenty-four, we're back in session, we left executive session, which is the last one.
Do we sign the documents and you go?
That was just last meeting, maybe second, at least, I'm sorry.
You want me to?
If you want to, you can be less than two hours.
Is that what I'm doing?
I have something to prepare, I'll give you more paperwork. Pay two months' pay.
This thing with the attorney client, which probably turned into, uh, yes. And you have this.
And we signed to the.
Signed up.
Signed up.
Sign, original for signature.
I'm done.
Great. Very good.
Going down there.
I did, I did, I grabbed it, I, I.
Nice.
Seven months old, he's a cutie. Well, you know, well, we, my son, I'm losing silver screen travel, we went down last weekend.
Yes.
My new friend.
Work member?
Yeah, he, he's a professor, and he's supposed to narrow it. I'm in his way. And, I just, I mean, they did it whole a lot, and I think they're, they're trying to, like, a little stir phrase, teaching courses from home, sure.
But they're doing it?
Yeah. There's a nice trail near where they live, so I've gone on a lot of trips all summer trip, with the baby, of course.
It sounds fun.
Oh, yeah. He doesn't cry, it's fine, he's seven months old, he doesn't cry, and they leave him, nobody doesn't cry, we laugh all the time.
Isn't that nice?
They need to sleep. I think when he gets older, he may cry more. He's very mellow with the baby, and they took, they have a trouble naming Joe's sleep, so they took him to a sleep specialist.
Oh.
But no.
Hour, hour, Jason doesn't sleep.
Yeah.
He, he sleeps like five hours in a stretch, it's like work.
That's what I'm saying. We're not there.
But if I could just go to bed, if I could finish my day early enough, I'm gonna be good.
I know. That was it, they're gonna come up and.
Oh, sure.
Okay, now, recording, eight twenty-nine, all in favor?
Aye.